Good evening and welcome to the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Roth, and tonight's roundtable is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to all. Thank you for joining us. Um, City Clerk, please take the roll. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Catherine Roth here. Councilmember Ethan Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Walton.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Holley.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Mahew. Councilmember Matt Lusay.
Here.
Councilmember Kara Christensen here, and Councilmember Joe Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
They are moved to excuse, we're comfortable with it. Second.
It's moved by Catherine Holway and taken by Catherine Lusay to excuse Mayor Proton Mahew. Third second. Great. Um, name of the person? All those in print, the I.
I.
The post name. Right, so motion passes and confirm Mayor Proton in the absence of dispute. Reminder, members must seek recognition for their share for speaking. Be sure to raise your hand. And first item on our special business is to approve the agenda. So they have motion to approve the roundtable agenda.
Does it move?
There's second.
Second.
Okay, is moved by Professor Walton and taken by Catherine Johnson. Need a session? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post name. Motion passes the roundtable agenda approved. The first item for discussion this evening is the Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero seven five, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight proposed capital improvement plan. Thanks to councilmembers and residents that attended the CIP open house last week. The open house provided an opportunity to discuss and ask questions of the staff on the different projects. Please note that this item is scheduled to be discussed again for the July eleventh regular council meeting and final approvals currently scheduled for July twenty-fifth. That's a regular council meeting. Um, while there's no opportunity for public comments this evening, you probably will have an opportunity to comment online the city website under the capital improvement plan and also speak to this capital improvement plan in July eleventh and July twenty-fifth regular company meeting. So tonight we will continue our deliberations on the proposed plan. And first there are several updates. I've invited Drew Bootey. We'll leave the figure.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Thank you for having me here today. Uh, just to give a little bit of background, we introduced the CIP, the preliminary CIP at the retreat. Now, since that time, we have revealed the CIP documents to you at our last pleasure roundtable where we also took some questions. As Mayor mentioned, we also held a CIP over the house and many of you attended that open house last week. It was good to hear all the conversation that kind of took place with the public as well as you regarding the CIP. As Mayor also said, there is going to be more opportunity to kind of continue this discussion moving forward with both the public as well as you, Council, as we proceed towards a hopefully a date of the July twenty-fifth adoption. With that said, we want to go through some of the updates that we have made to the CIP document. They're listing the agenda bill, but to start off with, Council recently passed a casino agreement with the Nippon tribe regarding their potential or expansion um at this casino site up there. As a result, the city is set to collect six point six million dollars from that agreement, five point five million dollars in general facility charges, uh, which is um essentially um a fee that we charge as a condition of service, money that can be applied kind of anywhere within the city. But then we also received one point one million dollars in contribution in aid of construction. And that money is set to go towards the water reclamation facility phase three project, where I think they're looking at increasing the resolved handling capacity and so on over there as a result of this casino expansion. In addition to that, because of that casino expansion, we have also updated the project detail sheet for the water reclamation facility project phase three as well. We increased the budget by one point one million dollars to reflect that additional work that we're going to be doing out there for the casino. And in addition to that, we have also updated the community center expansion project worksheet two with a three point eight percent true interest cost. That came to us from our financial advisor. Previously, in the previous document, we had a three point four percent true interest cost in there, and so we wanted to reflect better information that we got from our financial advisor on that, which means that the debt service proposed for the community center bond would be a little bit more expensive than what we had previously provided to you. In addition, we also received from the fire department an updated project detail sheet regarding the fire ladder truck as well. So you're going to see that as a part of your updated CIP doctrine too. Now, the point of today is really to hear from you. Um, we're looking for feedback regarding the CIP. Whether you have any questions, we're here to hopefully answer those questions for you, and if not, return to you at a later date and get those answers for you. But also, it's an opportunity for Council to discuss collectively and collaboratively what do you want to see out of your CIP over the next six years. So this is an opportunity for some of that conversation for you as well with your fellow council members. And then we're here to take that information back with us and update the CIP. This document itself is moving slowly from, you know, from the administration owning the document to the council owning the document. And so as we kind of further kind of along here, council may want a certain number of amendments to it to kind of reflect the overall consensus of council. And so, like I said, we're here to take that information and actually get that into the document. Some of the questions that you might want to ask is if the list of capital programs or projects included in this CIP, what council would like to see complete over the next six-year period? And if not, are there any sort of changes that you may want to make um to the CIP? So um, as I suggested, we want to hear from you about what you think about the CIP. What do you like? What are your dislikes right now? Um, so that we can kind of work towards the ultimate goal, which is to adopt the CIP by July twenty-fifth. So with that said, Jen, our insurance finance director has any kind of additional comments, I'll invite her up here. But if not, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Senator Walton.
So my very first concern is the the volatile markets and with rising interest rates and the cost of borrowing. I guess that's that's kind of top of mind. Secondly, is the cost of inflation. Um, we're seeing that it's bumping up against eight, eight and a half percent. And the third concern I have, and that's just supply chain, there's so many variables out there. But as I was working my way through this document, I did notice that there is a contingency plan um reserves in the six-year plan, uh, which is about eleven percent, if I recall, of the overall plan. Mr. Boot, would you be so kind to to just kind of comment on that so that we have a better understanding? We try to have a better understanding. Perhaps everyone else has more clarity than I do.
Um, so as a part of this overall document, this we see here, the cost of providing their two-year of expenditure, uh, which in essence means that we're inflating our proposed construction costs and design costs and all that over time by about three to five percent. Um, to reflect that, you're right, when we think about contingency, the point of that contingency is to help guard the city against potential cost increases that we're unaware of. Uh, we don't quite know exactly what's going to happen in six years' time, for example, and so we have to make sure that there is some sort of reserve level there so that we can actually complete that project as we anticipated that we intending to schedule a different CIP.
And it's a thank you, and as a follow-up to that, and we did have our public open house. It was kind of interesting hearing some of the feedback, and I think it's really important for us as a council to hear that from the public. But one of the largest set-asides, if you will, is the YMCA expansion proposal. And uh, you know, there there's a concern about cost overruns. Just through the process, what are some of the things that we as a city have to kind of um keep us from from um overspending on a project like that? As far as as bids and and what, you know, we we may project X dollars and it comes back at a hundred and twenty-five percent of that, what what kind of assurances do our taxpayers have making sure that we're not overspending?
Well, I think that's a fantastic question. Um, as we talked about previously a little bit ago, there is a contingency in here that is roughly five million dollars or so to help kind of guard against potentially some of those cost overruns. I'll say that a kind of another guard rail that maybe the council or the council or the public needs to consider is the role of council. So if we're having to bring a bid package back to you that's a hundred and twenty-five percent, council ultimately has the authority to provide that check and balance against whether to move forward with that project or not. Uh, so there are kind of these posts or these milestones that we'll have to reach in full view of the public, but also in full view of council as well, they can provide that kind of protection that we need overall. Terms of the bid process, I think that's an important consideration because likely we will go for a competitive thing, right? Um, through that process and hopefully we'll get lower prices as a result of that competitive process that we have in front of us. Uh, with that said, I may be forgetting a few things, and so I'd like to invite Mike Campbell's back there if he has any additional comments regarding this. But I think, you know, between council, your ability to say no to community certain projects, but also what we tried to deal with perfectly in here is provide contingency, but then also make sure that we're estimating relatively accurately as possible what are potential construction costs are to part of this. Other opportunities, if we do happen to go over, there any sort of scope reductions that we might want to consider with the project move there to. So I'll just add that as a relative idea, but.
Thank you.
Turn your phone. Press OK. Instructor, you got it first?
Okay. Uh, Drew covered most of it. The one thing that I remind you is that time is is the biggest factor. So oftentimes, by not taking action on a project quickly, cost magnify massively. So that's always something that we like to keep in mind, but please, whenever we bring a project for you for final approvals, you always have the option to say no, and we will always provide as much option and latitude as we can so you have a.
And Councilmember Holloway is probably well aware of this, and that's there have been times when we've had capital projects come before us and the bids come in are exceeding that, and we've simply walked away from those. And we revisited that at a later date. Has that not been the case?
There have been occasions that that would.
Senator Holway.
I think, Jim. There have been occasions, uh, I would call a few part between in which, yes, the bids have been over and we have turned them down. More often than not, it's staff that's worked to consolidate, to modify some of the things and actually come in under our estimates. Um, that we really depend on staff to do that. And we can do a good job of.
And these these numbers are actually in twenty twenty-three numbers, so you have this year to plan and get things going. Um, the last bid we had was in twenty nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Um, and because of inflation, everything continues thirty percent. So twenty nineteen to now, actually to twenty-three, um, it's increased quite a bit. So the other thing is they might there's a couple of different options on building. One is design build, where the actually the Y would take on the the design, the build, and they have a construction company that's been building most of their swimming pools. So so there's a couple of different options that we look at and figure out what's the least expensive um in that area. Council member.
Yeah, I was, I was a liberal arts major, so I have no actual skills. Um, and when we're talking about the math, we're talking about, you know, prices going up. You know, in in some cases thirty percent, but our numbers that we're looking at for the project we've inflated, if I heard you right, somewhere between three and five percent. And I would, I'm wondering if you, because, you know, we keep on being told that inflation is seventy-eight percent. But I'm not running into a lot of things that are just seventy-eight percent more. They're they're twenty-five percent more, fifty percent more, big things, important things. And so I'm wondering what you're talking about when you're when you're using those numbers.
Thank you very much for the question. So what I would say is we're we're, these costs are based on today. So we're starting from today. We're not starting with these costs from two years ago when it was cheaper. So we're starting from today. And when we think about what the Fed is currently doing right now, is they're raising the Fed funds rate, for example, to try to bring down the rate of inflation. So they're likely going to achieve that over time. I'm not sure how long that's going to take. But if you're thinking that we're going to potentially have, you know, eight to ten percent inflation, you know, for a good six-year period, that's highly unlikely right now, just based on what the Fed Reserve is trying to do. And so I just keep that in mind. They're trying to bring that down. They're looking at a target probably about two percent inflation annually. That is generally the goal that was set out for them for the most part. And so that is why they're increasing the Fed funds rate and why you're seeing some of these interest rates increase so much is that will eventually start going down. But, you know, for the first couple of years, it might be relatively high, but over the long term, it's probably three to five percent is greater than the target that the Fed is likely setting. So.
So then when you're looking at that, at those numbers, three to five percent, that's looking long-term over like a thirty-year bond or something like that, or are you talking about costs over the next few years?
So our inflation over time hasn't necessarily been five percent overall. It's probably been two to three over the historical average, right, overall? And so we're just building a little bit of cushion just in case of any sort of issues that may arise. But generally, you know, and that's to overall protect the cities. We're trying to just kind of pad it just a little bit more so that we're making sure that we're not actually going to have these costs over and happening in the future. But hopefully that makes sense. I don't know if I'm getting certain question.
If it doesn't make sense, not because you didn't explain it well.
Okay.
Yeah, this end.
Catherine Johnson.
Oh, I think the Catherine's one of those things. I might be wrong.
Catherine Holway.
Okay, so I'm I'm not willing to bring you this. Um, last time we had discussions, obviously, it wasn't twenty nineteen. I've been talking around a twenty million dollars. So I do need accounting with how we go from twenty million dollars to rough figures forty-two million dollars. Right? I do need to understand what percentage of that forty-two you actually intend to bond. Um, because the last two times we went out to bond, they were like ten and twelve million dollars in the circle, right? We cannot pass.
Where are you getting four each, I'm sorry?
Uh, if you add the thirty-seven, make it forty. If you add the thirty-seven construction costs in the year following, and then the design starts at one point seven million, I believe. Uh, next year, it comes out to be at top forty million dollars.
And so it's a two point twenty-nine nine.
Uh, and then there's a design in the year prior to that for initial bond. But what, even if it's twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Fine, I've gone from twenty million to twenty-nine million. I still need that account. We talked about what the bond is earning in twenty, but I still need that account to go there. And I do need to understand what percentage of that we're talking about that bond. Again,
yeah.
Our past bond issuers have been at lower value and have not passed. So I mean, we're going to move, I want to move on to the business, but I want to move successfully on to the business. So I'm concerned with that statement. And that really reflects part of fact. So what we really need to worry about again is what the construction costs are when we go out to bid. Inflation will be into that. From there, we know the dollar figure of which we have to go bond, which would be the market interest rate on that loan of the bond. From there, you pretty well have contracted material, you have money to pay for it, that will proceed forward. That interest rate, that the bond interest rate is what we will have to pay back over the term of the law. So it's not twenty years of inflation.
It's fixed.
One thing that is included in there is um one point five nine for the spray part, which I believe was in the past. Never in the quotes, it's additional.
It's Nippon spray.
So I think generally the the point is taken. Um, we would discuss, you know, so Nippon is a lot different today than it was, I would say, ten years ago when those events took place. So I mean, supply version certainly grows at that time, Brad. Um, I think that's one point to just keep in mind. Um, I forget, anyone with a second?
Yeah, the bond issuance was going to be a complimentary bond.
Yeah, part of the difficulty is the scope overall. So the scope may have changed since that first discussion back in twenty nineteen. Um, I think there's always been a pull element to that as well, but there are different potential mixes and matches in exactly the site location. Uh, that kind of adds into that too, um, depending on what the Y has actually provided to the administration overall. Um, I think the site location has changed a little bit, right? And so that kind of adds into some of that change that you might see in terms of the cost. Um, but there's these different variables that are keeping, right, as close as possible, and we're trying to keep our eye on as much as possible, but they are changing. And those discussions are ongoing right now.
So councilmatic is a decision yet to be made. I'm a little reluctant to go with a double-figure million-dollar bond complimatic. I would rather make sure that the citizens are in agreement with us during that kind of. That's what we're talking about. So I think it's not assumed councilmatic, that may be the plan you're discussing, but it's not assumed councilmatic, that's kind of a.
Senator Johnson?
Yeah, I agree. We should at least talk about that. Um, the, there are so many terms in budgetary matters, and uh, you get very easy to get very confused if you don't have a degree in this stuff. So when in this document here, in the big document here, uh, when we talk about the term reserves, um, when I think of reserves, what I think of is, again, at the end of a budgetary year, uh, or every two years, we're left with some amount that didn't actually end up getting spent. So what we do is we carry a fund balance, I'm using that term correctly, and we put that into the general fund as reserves. Am I saying that correctly?
Generally, again.
Generally, okay. So what I oftentimes try to think about is the reserves are kind of like a rainy day, but they don't have to be. They can be like a rainy day, but so if we ran out of revenues or whatever reason, inflation goes wild and whatever else we can't fund things, we have some money left over so that we can get through some period of time where we figure out how to sustainably fund things. Because obviously, just funding things out of reserves, you're going to run out, and then you've got a problem, right? So that's how I think of rainy day, but now my question is, how big right now is our reserve? Uh, I mean, how much is in there? And then if some of that went into the CIP projects, how much will be left after that for us in case we did run into problems and need to use the reserves as a proper rainy day, but does that make sense?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, Mayor, I have some quick kind of add-on to that because it goes to the same thing.
Confirming thing.
Thank you. Um, maybe what I, what I, I'm I'm on the same path with you. Maybe I'd like to ask is what sort of reserve will we maintain?
That's.
The process, as opposed to, you know, what might they be, but what what are we targeting to maintain as a reserve? That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
So. There are multiple points on this. Um, I think overall, I think the first point to make is the Finance Administration Committee was kind of, we're currently working through financial management policy. Within that financial management policy, we'll be setting reserve levels, and eventually those policies will be um handed over to council to adopt. I think the proposed target is roughly, let me say. Okay, I think usually around sixteen point five percent or somewhere around that, sixteen point five percent of our operating expenditures annually. Um, for example, now, in regard to the CIP itself, that's just the general one. Right? So that's a whole different bucket than exactly what we're talking about here. This is capital, and so you've got to think that is that's money that's separate over here. The general fund that you primarily use, the operator fund, the police, your fire, the parks maintenance, your street maintenance, it's a whole separate bucket over here. Um, but they interact, and they interact just very little, I didn't leave, but we actually have a proposal in here because right now what you have is you have reserves or cash balances, fund balances in excess of thirty, thirty-three percent basically of what you need of your annual operating expenditures within kind of those general governmental bucket you have overall. And so as a result of that, what we're proposing as a part of the CIP itself, and I would ask you, if you have an opportunity, then turn to page thirty-three or eighty-two. You've got a financial schedule in here, this financial, a couple of financial schedules. This financial schedule is called Statement of Mind on the State of Resources Uses in Cash Balance. And this is the one that we actually presented to Council at the retreat. That's page thirty-three.
Or me, my mind got punched through.
Oh, okay. It's a very colorful chart. It kind of looks like this. Um, it comes after.
Yeah.
The first one I have. Comes after the net.
Superb, fine page.
How seven minutes.
Yeah.
Second page is the outside, all right? So then. More or less. Notebooks are fun, I think. Taking that to school. All right, so within this financial schedule that we've provided you, within the gray area, you're going to see two red flags. Now, I actually want, Council will look at the second red flag, because that second red flag says government-type operating transfer. In essence, what the administration is proposing to do is to transfer two point five million dollars from our general governmental bucket over to our capital bucket in order to fund the non-utilities portion of the CIP. Now, what will two point five million dollars do if we remove it from here and move it over there? Well, you will still have a cash balance in excess of what's recommended by the GFOA, which is sixteen point five percent of your annual operating expenditures. And so the administration thought that was, well, council will ultimately make the decision, but that is what the administration is proposing as part of the CIP, is to actually take some of the cash that is currently in excess of thirty percent of of our annual operating expenditures in the general governmental, actually move that over to capital while still remaining above that sixteen point five percent mark overall. And so that is one thing to keep in mind here is the operating bucket is still going to be fully reserved for that sixteen point five percent of our annual operating expenditures. I know I'm repeating myself constantly. I'm sorry about that. Um, but that is what we're proposing as a part of the CIP. In addition to that, what I want council to also consider is at the bottom of this chart, you're also going to see something that says estimated any non-utility CIP cash balance. Oh, that.
Sorry, got a little order. Could could we advance to the page that you're actually speaking from so that? Um, from, you know.
This. Yeah, that one.
Here we go. Okay, thank you. Just for anybody who's watching, way more sense. Well, I can match the flags with mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, um, you know, the reason why we got those flags is we want to call attention to it. Um, we do think it's important that council knows what we're intending to do here. Um, and like I was saying, the first point that I had is if you look at the estimated any non-utilities CIP cash balance, which is at the bottom, in essence, that tells you how much we believe we're going to be ending each year in terms of cash within our capital, non-utilities capital bucket. All right, and so you can see that by twenty twenty-four, that's looking to get kind of down to two million dollars or so. So we're still, like I said, working with council through in the up and in committee, start out with it through our financial policies. As a part of that, we're going to have to consider what is our risk to infrastructure, whether we need to actually increase how much we're reserving, right, for that? Or maybe if we don't need to, maybe we can actually decrease that. And that is something, like I said, we're going to work here. I think some of the things that we also need to consider is a lot of these projects have contingencies built whom that maybe we won't need to use. So a caveat to this, uh, any cash balances, if you don't need to use those contingencies, then actually that number's going to be higher in the future. So please thank you, take that into consideration, but in terms of kind of our overall reserve levels, those are kind of the areas that I would consider council should consider.
Does the general fund, general fund reserve. Uh, decrease to six point five percent as a target?
Well, it would probably end up around about eighteen to twenty percent in total, which is higher than the recommended GF O A. Sixteen point five percent of annual operating expenditures.
GF O A minimum recommended.
No, they would consider that fully reserved at that point, if you have sufficient reserves.
I understand we have operating reserves because we did payments from the state quarterly, where we have to pay monthly. There were two months in which we're kind of spending forward to the next quarterly payment, so there was operating reserves from there. There were contingency reserves, there were such things as damage. Which really helps the public platform, so, um. It's not too far away from some of those reserve figures we had prior. Uh, without. Just without GF O A ten. Um, there were reasons we did some of this. Um, the other one.
Keep talking to Mike.
The other one I'm so concerned about is we have several items in here which prior were operating expenses. Sidewalk replacements, one, uh, park maintenance, facilities maintenance, those are operating activities, which were in general fund prior. So, I, I'm still, uh, I guess I'm not on the boat yet of why those have shifted from operating expenses to capital expenses. Um, I understand the dollar figure, maybe talking over time, but there's still a difference in a capital project and a. Operating expense, just in the nature of the beast. Um. So I'm, I'm concerned of shifting money out of general fund, when we shifted projects out of general fund that we're now calling capital, which we didn't call capital. I just cause, and the shift's just cause I'm. Don't like sitting there. So, of my, my brain proven up, one.
Can I?
Yes, please.
So I think as a part of the financial management policies, we'll kind of work through some of those definitional challenges that we may have between operating capital. Often when I'm thinking of capital, we often have to reflect on what are kind of general, which kind of accepted principles, I'd say, right? And so usually we're thinking of capital as something that if we're gonna do some work, it's gonna improve the useful life of the asset by at least one year. So often I think there's a distinction between are we adding on to a facility that may increase its asset life by an additional year? Are we improving an asset which may increase the asset, ass, sorry. Asset life by a year? Or are we replacing an asset, for example, that will completely change its uh, replacement schedule? For example, I think when we get into the question of what is repair. Repair is important because repair doesn't necessarily increase the useful life of the asset, it just tries to restore it to its original condition so we achieve its original intention. So. That is kind of what I believe that would tell us in this situation is something that we may want to include as part of the financial policies. And I think that's what we're trying to maybe reflect as a part of the CIP. At all, um, that we're, repair stays within the operating bucket, but addition, improvement, replacement are all focused or prioritized as part of the CIP.
Senator Martin?
Okay, so to follow along with council member Hallways, um. Line of thought. That two and a half million dollar transfer. From our operating to our capital improvement plan. If you follow along at the very top number. If we didn't move the two and a half million over, we would be operating in a deficit in twenty twenty-five. At the very top line, you can see the beginning, non-utility cash balance. We would be a deficit in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-seven, and then get back to par in twenty-eight. But. What does it cost for those funds that cost is zero? Because those are already our funds, rather than go out and borrow. Two and a half billion to make this work. So I guess that's, that's probably some of our consideration is. With borrowing costs from ourselves at zero versus going out borrow. It's a four and a half percent.
So.
Senator Howie?
I guess like. My position, there were items.
Please lean forward and speak in the mic, thank you.
My position is there are things that were moved out of the general fund, which are maintenance activities, such as sidewalk facility maintenance, you want to probably remain in general fund. We should reduce the requirement for that two point five million dollars to ship over.
So your suggestion, I'm sorry. So, the follow-up, the, the, the question is, is are there things in the capital improvement plan that should be part of the operation or operation? And I guess that goes back to our experts.
Well, it's, you know, this CIP has precedent, right? For example, and so some of these capital programs were set in the previous, even the last cycle that we adopted the CIP. With some of the current council members that you have here currently right now, um, so. You know, it's, well, I go back to the, what is the definition of capital overall? And when I'm thinking about replacing sidewalk panels, you know. Maybe we're narrowly focused on just the panel itself, right? But you are in essence changing its useful life by replacing it, right? For example, so it's no longer just an asset that's gonna live. You know, for the next two years, just because it's, it's already lived for the past eight, for example, but now it's increased that we replaced it with the useful life now of ten years. Right, and so by that definition. My intention would be to keep the programs that we have currently in here, for example. We also have to consider the revenue, right, sources, so real estate exercise tax is certainly. You know, available to us to use on these kind of capital maintenance items that you might wanna consider as well. And so when you start. You know, not using the revenue sources that you have, and you start shifting some of this back to the general fund. Then what does that do to our overall sustainability within the general fund? And I, we have to present different financial forecasts, which changes the strategy of getting happy with it, but you have to operate even sooner. And for example, to reach some sort of, um. Conclusion to help sustain us during that time period, so these are important boundaries, right? That council is considering, so, thank you, these are appropriate questions.
Senator Lacy?
Um. Yeah, I think the thing that, that draws me into this discussion and has me thinking about it is. Um, and, and Drew, you just touched on it, is several of these items were on the previous capital improvement plan. Because, you know, we couldn't have predicted a pandemic. We couldn't have predicted that impact, so those dollars couldn't be spent, we didn't have, we, we just had to put it somewhere else. We had, we didn't have the revenue, we didn't have the income generating to support these things. You know, it's quite. Realistic to believe that will happen again, not that there's a pandemic again, but that, that, the funds may not be exactly as predicted. I mean, Drew does a very good job of this stuff and predicting. Um, I fall on the, the art side of the conversation, less than the science side of the conversation, so I look at it from the standpoint of, you know, history, it's doomed to repeat itself. Um, so I think part of our, our, our deliberation on these is not so much. Where is the funds coming from and where should we transfer from, or should we borrow more or borrow less? It's when the rubber hits the road and we have to commit to something, you commit to it. It goes into operational status, it comes off the list, it's active, you, you're not just a little pregnant. You're all the way in. And that's what you gotta follow, you gotta make sure you follow through on that, otherwise you, you know, ordering a project could be very expensive for the city. To not have, you know, to pull the plug on some funds and then, you know, as we've learned over the last couple of years, everything got more expensive. So, I think what we do, what I see as a council role is really. Sequencing some of these things in a way that says the funds will be there because we planned for them to be there. And if that's, and that, and that goes to all the discussions about every single item, not just single that one. Um. Uh, so. My, my comment is, is I, you know, as we, as we approach this schedule and go through that. Let's make sure we have these in a, in a sequence that makes sense as well. Because those, that sequence did jumble around from twenty-eight, the last CIP from, what was it, twenty? Yes. Sixty minutes, seventy.
We updated, you know, for the two-year period.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, last year.
Right. So I think that's, that's where I get into this and look at it and say, okay, well, some of these projects have been waiting six years already. Are those ones, ones we need to really tackle? And make sure that they don't get pushed to the next by, next six-year cycle. So, that's, that's where I'm kind of looking at as well as what your conversation was, uh, council along. That wasn't a question.
No, that's, that's perfect, yes.
Senator Vincent?
I think so, what I just wanna say was the saying really rings true. Uh, one of the things that you might wanna consider when we're looking at these huge projects is what is the opportunity cost in doing them? What are we foregoing the opportunity of, uh, of completing or paying for? That we, you know, otherwise couldn't if we spent thirty million dollars on. On, that's wonderful, um, and, uh. I am really excited by, uh, Mr. Bate's, um. Prognosis that. That inflation is not going to get worse forever. I love that idea, and I, I'm, I'm.
Very polite, yeah.
But I'm, uh. I, I'm antsy about the current financial situation of the world, and I, I wonder. You know, I wonder if we're, if we're being responsible, if we don't consider that, you know, maybe there are. More responsible ways to protect our city from. Ruin. Uh, then, I don't know, they, I, I'm not, and I'm not trying to, uh, I'm not trying to round file any big projects or anything like that. But I think that it's, it's something that we should keep on our mind, is what are the other opportunities to, to do with these funds? Getting deeper in debt right now feels. Uh. Dangerous.
Yeah. So I think just to add to that, um, I think we touched on a important points, um. What we've tried to do is provide with kind of an alternative list of. Projects the city has considered overall, and so as we kind of discussed previously, we went through a screening process. Probably around twenty nineteen, I believe, maybe a little bit earlier than that, for example, internally. Uh, had to try to figure out, okay, what are probably the most important sort of projects or programs to do to the city? I think as a part of this plan, we've prioritized capital maintenance, and that's why you see all these capital program items, because we need to take care of our. Assets right first that we currently have right now. And there is an opportunity cost to not, well, there's a cost to not doing that as well. Um. There are things like exponential curves that we could present to you that says, okay, if you don't take care of a street, it's just gonna get worse over time. And in fact, it's gonna become more expensive overall for the city to then repair that if you don't actually take care of our assets right now. When you think about that parkway out there, once the water starts seeping down to the base layer, for example, and starts eroding that base layer. Then the reconstruction costs are driving higher and higher and higher, and so. Making sure that we stay on top of our maintenance, we are critical, and I believe that's a strong point to this plan itself is. That is a primary focus for us, I think, as a city overall, and is driven by the council members and I think has been repeated by all the new council members as well about how important that is. For us to kind of continue to do as we move forward in the city, and it's also part of what we're sustaining voting for, and we need to sustain our current infrastructure. We don't do that, and you're gonna start seeing more hot hole maintenance. A lot of this other stuff, all these breakdowns, water mains blowing up. I don't want to say blown up. They break down.
Oh, it's like a light rain season.
Yeah. Right. But, you know. So, to me, there's an office tuning cup by not actually spending these funds, and it could just get worse and worse and worse and more expensive for the city to try to recover in the future. That's, you know, that might have to come out of the taxpayers' pockets. Probably balanced for the most part, uh, to make sure that we don't have to recheat further, right, necessarily to accomplish that. But using the resources that we have, making sure that we plan and prioritize appropriately our capital and incitements, I think we can get there, so.
Senator One?
So, along that line. We were able to secure five million dollars from the state to help repair Soqualmie Parkway. How has that helped redeploy or reprioritize other things for the city?
Um, that's a fantastic question. Um, I'd say it has allowed us to kind of, um. Add more projects for example, to the list that you see here. The Parkway was gonna require, just I think we're anticipating of doing it at one time, uh, basically cash that we would have had on hand to accomplish that. Well, now that cash can be redeployed to into these other projects that would have. Um, additional value I love to the community. Um, I can't say necessarily exactly where that would have gone, but, um, in essence, if you look at the list here and you can see. Well, does that allow us to actually complete the Campbell Creek Bridge Replacement Project, for example? Or does that allow us to start the town center improvement project phase three, to provide a more welcoming, right, connection between here and the halls, for example? So we can hopefully bring more tourist dollars right downtown, or just ultimately some of what that project is intended for, right, for example? Um, and so that's kind of how it's probably gonna redeploy, right, as a well.
Thank you.
Any questions? Um. Well, we had a couple of these very specific questions about some of the items that were in. On the back, on the back burner, but I have.
Okay, I just wanna suggest to council as well, uh, we're available to meet with any council members one by one if you wanna discuss the CIP. You know, this is a lot of material to kind of work through. And so in some cases, you may wanna kind of come talk to us and just kind of help us walk you through what's in this document. We're more than happy to do so, and so please feel free to reach out at any point.
The, I was just.
Senator Lacy?
I was gonna ask that because I see that we've got twenty-eight days before we wanna try to get to that final review date. On the calendar, and I would encourage all councils to, to reach out and ask those questions as we go, um. So, the. The item that I'm, uh. I guess one of the things I'm looking at here is. There's a lot of dollars upfront, and, and I know money costs more later. If we, if we don't go after it soon, it gets more expensive later, that's always the case. Um, but again, I'm also concerned about the interest rates and where they're going as well, because I mean. Even though we have, we have some borrowing benefits as a, as a city, which has been doing that, but at the same time. It's a lot of dollars, so I guess some of the, some of these, um, projects. I don't know, we need to have a session to get a little more deep into where the funding sources are coming from, where the, where the partners are. Um. You know, do, do, questions that I would have are, if we do find a partner for something, where does that, where does that directly impact? That sort of thing, can we, can we prepay down? Um, the bond early, things like that, all those sorts of questions, and I, 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 I'm very focused, very specific things I wanna ask about. Um, some of the major projects.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that we try to do with this document is kind of match up the sources with the natural projects itself. So, uh, just for council's edification, um, starting on page fifteen, we're gonna see some of the sources. I'm sorry, I know that you guys are fine yourself. Which now, I don't have a.
Number three.
Yeah.
That's the reason, the reason as well.
Yeah. Uh, so we've tried to kind of display for you kind of where the, the revenue and what kind of revenues we go with our projects. Uh, just to keep you informed how we plan on deploying those kind of revenue sources. Um, also as a part of each worksheet, uh, within the anticipated funding mix section, which. Uh, the detail section is all those worksheets that you see at the end, for example. At the bottom, you're gonna see second table below the budget that says anticipated funding mix, and you're gonna see all those kinds of sources that are operated project as well, so. Which would hopefully help tie the revenue directly to the project itself and kind of keep you informed about how we intend to use each revenue source. Which would hopefully help tie the revenue directly to the project itself and kind of keep you informed about how we intend to use each revenue source. And also I would say as a part of this as well, um, I guess budgeting has been difficult. Uh, it's very much, uh, one huge logic game. Uh, you've got multiple restrictions on different sources, right? Constantly. And so you're trying to keep tabs on that for the most part of how you can deploy it. So, uh, we do our best to make sure that we're lining up the, the projects with an appropriate source that have that ability legally, right? To be spent on that. And you'll hear the term restrictions and commitments and things like that. And sometimes council will commit a certain revenue source to specific uses.
Grant, Comfort Johnson?
I believe that there is, uh, some sort of the gas tax or something that is limited to transportation expenses. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That now compares to our expected transportation expenditures.
Um, so if you go to page sixteen, including kind of a cash flow forecast overall. It's under the section titled utilities and transportation taxes. And so generally the bundle that we've got there in terms of sources all kind of have the same sort of, um, availability and use on transportation things. So we've got the utility tax there. Is it approved by, um, council in two thousand eleven? Um, transportation sales tax, motor vehicle fuel tax, otherwise known as the gas tax. There's multiple transportation tax and all of them are kind of bundled together in one. You can see the, this is a real bad and how we use it for that.
For this year, I'm actually, they, they legislative session at the state, they will be working on their, um, capital budget. I envision capital budget. And so our hope is to get funding for the full for the legislators. And so I'll be talking with them, um, starting to gear that up. Um, and then off of the white paper. We would also like join Friday letter with us and hopefully to get funding. So there's lots of different opportunities that are coming up this year, especially through King County Parks Levy, the aquatics portion. So we're applying for that. Um, why, why would also get a grant that they usually get, but that they're, they're too late in, in, um, applying for that. So that would actually come in in twenty twenty four, they would apply for, that'd be perfect timing for when we, when we are building, so about one thing, five minutes. So there's a lot of grant opportunities that we can start applying for, but we just need to make sure we will start doing that once we have the final approval. Councilor saying?
Yeah, one last question is, um, this is probably a biggie, but, um, it'd be great to see, um, I go to start when we're going to do this. And so I'll get the getting cash balance. We have thirty million, thirty one six million. It'd be great to see how we, how we are forecasting to that. And you may have distributed to, to council members while I was, you know, that's, but, uh, I'd love to see how you're estimating. That's what will be ahead of you.
This here?
Yeah, yeah, just, just the estimate. Understand what projects are in this year's, um, so we can continue the cycle forward. That kind of goes to some of the things we talked about in previous meetings as well as trying to connect the dots from project to project, you know, and make sure the dollars go, uh, go with the project. And when, when one gets dropped off or one gets added in, what we can do following, right?
As we have about five, four minutes. Um, actually, I wrapped it up with one more question from anyone and then we'll wrap that up and we'll give a five minute break before we start council. Senator Christian, can you?
So as, as we're moving through a project, if we decide that we have to soak down, how is that? How, how does that work? They think that we're getting funding from other sources where we have other partners?
Um, so I believe the grant source would also scale back appropriately, um, although, you know, that is not my expertise is the grant set out and if the person with the community development to come up here and potentially answer that. I'm not quite sure, but I don't know if Jen has a better answer than I do.
Here, uh, council members, um, Drew is correct. Uh, depending on, um, the timing, um, typically grants are reimbursed. Um, but before the city would get into a grant agreement, it would be known with the amount that, that we would be getting out of that grant source. So it is like a match. Um, and so that's where we would, uh, change the project sheet. So if you're looking at, for example, a community center, you look at that project detail sheet on the bottom of it, you'll see all of the identified services that we know of right now. Uh, if we were to scale back that project, we would, we would redo the same. Uh, perhaps it's a grant program that we know that we would not be able to see, uh, uh, just because of timing. So we would, we would pair that back, uh, and you would see an updated, uh, project sheet based on the council's direction for, uh, scale. All right, come with me, take a four minute break and then come back seven P M. Thank you. Your turn. Councilor, it's bring those to our regular meeting, city council. Time is now seven oh one P M. Unless we're going to show that, um, all council is present except for Compteur, um, Mayor Pro Sam Mayhew. And give excuse during our roundtable. So also please turn your microphone. Make sure we're down. Um, and Councilor One will give you that.
I politely admit it's due to the life of the United States of America and the Republic for its sands. One of the nation under God, individual with repeated death, it's wrong.
Now, for the Saturday agenda, which is to approve, approve the agenda. Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Your second. By Comfort Holloway and by Comfort Johnson. Is there any discussion?
So we head on here in executive session, everybody move that agenda and we will handle that discussion in, in full, regularly.
Executive session number one, not, not at the end, correct?
Yes.
The motion to remove the biggest session number one, which is no longer necessary.
That second?
Second.
Even second? I, Councilor Holloway and Councilor Day. On favor to move that?
Aye, aye, aye.
They pose names? Right. We'll remove that. Any other changes to the agenda? Right? Seeing that? We'll move on to the view. So original motion to approve the agenda with the biggest session number one removed, say aye?
Aye, aye.
And both or both may? Okay, we can announce that the agenda approved with the biggest session number one removed. Right, at this time, we'll buy time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. Just a few ground rules, residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient order. So comment to be limited to three minutes. Please wait to be recognized and say your name and city of residence through the record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of council mayor or staff or to engage in debate. And last, please respect the quorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded you. So that would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda of the meeting? Please raise your hand. We have three attendees, if they only raise their hand or anyone, and one person from the public in council chambers, so. Not seeing any attendees in council chambers that are, um, and you've been from, in public comments, we'll move on. Right. The consent agenda contains approval in the May twenty third, twenty twenty two regular city council meeting minutes. Approval of the May thirty first, twenty twenty two special meeting minutes. Approval of the claims report dated July seventh, twenty twenty two. A B twenty two dash zero eight nine firework stand permit for J and M, J and M, L L C. A B twenty two dash zero nine four firework stand permit for T and T fireworks. A B twenty two dash zero eight six super participation, participation agreement with Matthew and Shelby Holland. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Your flag is moved by Comfort Holloway and um, taken by Comfort Christian. Can you publicly comment on this item? We've been in a friendly comment that's related to the topic on the consent agenda and please leave a comment to two minutes. I'm looking for, you want any attendees? You want to speak to this, please raise your hand. And no one raising their hand? The council, is there any discussion? Seeing that all those approves, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed names? Right, the motion passes unanimously. Committee reports, um, Councilor Nick Simon, the agenda committee reports. The first committee is Public Safety Committee Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero nine treaty quarterly fire accreditation report. And as part of the fire department accreditation and continual self evaluation and improvement process, we will provide updates to council on specific goals, objectives and performance metrics. A fire department will share their twenty twenty two first quarter compliance report. You welcome, um, Fair Chief Craig with the report.
Good evening. Uh, this report was just added to the packet. It's a new item that we're going to be using quarterly. Uh, we're going to, our plan is to give a presentation of the Public Safety Committee and then add it to the council agenda. And then we can take any questions that you may have at the meeting. So I'm here to answer any questions for those that have had a chance to review it. Thank you.
Question, there's discussion? Councilor Benson?
It's a good report.
They did present a public thing on, they did, they on. All right. So any, any further report from Public Safety Committee?
Uh, no, we, we met last week. We enjoyed having the reports, um, and also any updates from each state as well on the different methods that they have and continue to the plan to go forward to keep the stakeholders cool.
Are there any reports from Community Development Committee?
Uh, no report.
Reports from Public Works Committee?
No report, this would.
Next committee report is Finance Administration Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero eight zero. Staffing Plan Mid Budget Revision. So this agenda bill allows for the finance department to make a change in department structure by adding a budget manager position. And the fire department is requesting one additional F T E to address an immediate staffing need in the department. But overall, the change would increase the F T E of, um, point five percent overall. So, seeing you cannot have her chair, I'll ask Councilor Holloway, please read the summary and motion.
The proposal of this agenda bill and subsequent council action is to address unforeseen staffing needs. Move to approve staffing plan F T E count draft is June seventh, twenty twenty three. May I have a second?
Second. Moved by Councilor Holloway and taken by Councilor Christian. Is there any public comment on this item? Do you understand, uh, other comments on this agenda? Let's be related to this agenda, please comment to two minutes. Looking at our attendees. And raise your hand, if you wish to have public comments. Seeing none. Okay, council, is there any discussion regarding? Councilor saying.
Yeah, I guess it's a question, maybe Chief Kirk, you want to answer. What's the timeline for? For shifting this into action?
Great question, um, we've been having internal discussions, we as in me and Deputy Chief Mike Bailey. About this exact issue when our plan is to leave. That we're about midway through the process for recruiting, so we can have a list available to hire from. And then once the individual is hired, then there's a short window of training. After that, about a month or one and a half, when it will be coming towards staffing. And at some point between that and when the person is coming towards staffing, it will likely move this into action. So it might not be on July first, as the need requires. We've already been having this conversation internally and planning for it, but great question.
Yeah, it was really, it was really about. How quickly can that be implemented in place?
Yeah, exactly, we've been ramping up to do it in our fingers crossed as soon as we can. But again, it'll be really dependent on when that person comes to staff.
Because then you'll also have a trainer as a result of this, right? And you brought in quite a few new volunteers.
Correct, yeah, we just brought on six random volunteers that just were at our first, their first meeting last week. So the timing isn't typical of all this is all coming together. And then will not be part of the zone to the training consortium on July first. So that's why it's important that we try to, that's why we're doing this process now, so that we're ready for it, if there was to be approved.
Any comments or questions pre discussion?
I mean, I think it'd be wonderful, but. Okay. I just, I think it would be wonderful to have initial personnel coming home with the training. These are volunteers that we have to, phenomenal job. And the black things are eighty thousand dollars, and we could put a cheap soul to pass in terms of their contribution, how much time to give. It'd be great to, and support, that's really everything on both sides.
Thank you. Absolutely, the volunteers, I mean, they need. I believe they make a small stipend. Basically, the free labor, we just need someone that can train them for all those hours and they are awesome, they do the payments and in fire, so. Councilor Walton?
And also in support of this agenda bill is that. Volunteer firefighters have to put in an enormous amount of hours and having somebody help coordinate that rather than putting on the rest of the already burdened staff is very important. So thank you so much for writing this forward.
Yeah, comments, questions? Right. Councilor saying.
Just want to make sure we don't skip over the, the other part of this one, which is the financial, finance department revision as well. Looks like there's no budget impact and it's more of a just shifting of responsibilities. My, my only comment, and it's really not even a concern, it's just that we are still operating under interim finance director model, so. I'm assuming this is just more. Twenty twenty one reactionary or twenty twenty two, sorry reactionary. Once we have a finance structure in place, I mean, they'd probably be looking at a full structure. As well, or is this something that is envisioned to be a permanent? Permanent revision going forward.
This is the vision of the permanent revision going forward, we definitely need a budget manager. We definitely have a person fully capable who you witnessed earlier today that talked about the capital improvement plan. And. So it would be, it used to be a permanent position. Sure. Right, any other questions or concerns? Moving to a vote, all those approves, the aye.
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 Any opposed name? Right, motion passes unanimously, so excellent, congratulations. The next way report from Finance Administration is Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero nine zero. Members to call me personal policy. I think I'll have the other, the other F and A committee person read this. Right, for Christiansen, please read the summary and motion. Right. Uh, those resolution number sixteen nineteen about some of the only personnel policies and delegate authority to the mayor and city administrators to make certain limited initial amendments with personnel policies in order to enable. The efficient and consistent administration of personnel matters. For example, the action is moved to approve resolution number sixteen nineteen adopting amendments of only personnel policies. The vote, right. It's moved by Councilor Christiansen and played by Councilor Walton. Is there any public comment on this item?
I know order, that was actually council member Holloway. With the second.
Oh.
I was, I was that close.
Ah. Okay, Councilor Holloway, thank you. So is there any public comment on this item, because I understand that it must be related to the agenda bill twenty two dash zero nine zero. And the limit time to two minutes, let's see if anyone has any questions regarding. Not anyone with their hands raised? We move on, council, is there any discussion regarding the updated personnel policy? Councilor saying.
Yeah. Much of this is related to the policy changes that happened during diversity proclamation and COVID. You know, it's my fellow cast members that that emergency proclamation has not been removed at this time. I think it's important to understand that that was a, what we went through was, was specific and. Related to a, you know, a, something that was globally impactful and I, I am uncomfortable making. Decisions based upon something that may happen once in several lifetimes to make them permanent, so I'm, I'm not supportive of any of these.
Councilor Holloway.
So to help me out, um, there was an amended section policy one point three dot two. Which had been removed or amended, what exactly was the action against that section? Uh, the committee asked for that to be amended and that is part and parcel of the E E O C. Process for administrative exemptions, medical in particular. It tracks existing law and so. I think I communicated with committee members and asked that, that remain in and, and as I mentioned, I think when I presented this, those. Uh, that policy language is, is modeled on much on the city of this clause, uh, which had. Is set up the way that some policies is, they had some, some more detail and updated language, which is back to the essential process. So that's what it said. So that, those words were in or not in the material as you, it was in the material like identical. And there was some, some conversation about whether the committee might want it to come out of it or the council and. And as I committed to committees, the committee was. The better practice would be to leave that in, that in the session. These actions were definitely mechanics, with whatever we review, committee needs, I'll be here if we want to make subsequent changes. I do the subsequent.
Correct.
And you're adhering to that rule.
Correct.
I don't, no further question.
There's other updates in here, um, such as we added the holiday, the holiday Juneteenth. So this is for the, um, maybe the non-union employees, right now all the union employees take that day off and so this allows our non-union employees to also get this holiday. By some of your council committee meetings were moved next week because our, um, some of the people that usually run them are in union and so they will be, they have that day off. So we're all hoping that the approval is allow our, our non-union to also celebrate that day. And the other things in here as well that have been updated that we just needed to update personnel policies for. It hasn't been updated in a while.
There are changes that the committee asked for additional language and those are reflected in this resolution, including that. Additional changes that led up to compensation, compensated absences was the, the lexiconic committee asked, you pointed your ass there. And that those being approved in the future by the mayor in a resolution, I think council on that, which is also, or in section two.
Any comments or discussion?
So.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, just to clarify, so, so these are, these are, um, decisions that the, the mayor can make, but then must be approved by the council.
So. I'm sorry.
Speak slowly with small words, it's okay.
You, uh, just, I wasn't clear on, I wasn't encompassed by the pronoun bees in the resolution there. Resolution adopts a set of amendments to the policies right now that incorporate some of the changes that. That were implemented during the, under the mayor's emergency proclamation. So if you approve this resolution, those will be added to the policy. A separate section of the resolution delegates authority to the mayor to make in the future technical updates to the policy that is needed to. Comply with state and federal law and things that are more in the nature of day to day management of the administration. While reserving to the council to approve by resolution. Future policy amendments that, that relate to increased compensation, compensation and benefits, compensated absences, i.e. vacation, sick leave, those types of things. Under section two of this resolution, those would have to come back to that full council. Future changes of that nature. Does that answer your question?
Probably. Yeah. That's helpful, thank you.
Right, any other questions? Right, you know, all those approves, the aye.
Aye.
Opposed name?
Aye.
We have. Five approved and one to name.
Or approved.
Did you not vote?
I did not.
You have, you can't abstain, abstain in the positive, so that is the.
Is it? Okay, then name.
Okay, you have four, a, yes, and two no's. Right. Moving on, we do not have an indicative session, which is the next, so we will move on to the. Agenda Bill twenty two dash zero eight five ARPA for facial authorization for small businesses and community organizations. Councilor Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
The purpose of the agenda bills authorize the expenditure of ARPA American Rescue Plan Community Culture Act. Funds to the support of small businesses and community organizations in the city of Snopoly. Move to authorize the appropriation of seven hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars of ARPA funding. The Snopoly Small Business and Community Organization Fund. May I have a second?
Second.
It does move by Councilor Holloway and second by Councilor Walton. Okay, we. Is there any? Any public comment regarding this item? Seeing no hands up. Do have our ARPA coordinator. Amendment room bill will provide an overview, so thank you Amanda for joining us this evening.
Hello, everybody, thanks for having me. Um, I believe I was going to be able to share my screen. Let's see, here we go. Okay, we all see that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm just wanted to share our kind of behind the scenes scoring matrix with you for all the ARPA applications. Um, just a quick background, in June of last year, uh, the city was awarded one point nine million dollars of federal ARPA funds as a first tranche. And this year on April twenty fifth, the council passed, uh, resolution sixteen fourteen. That established four criteria that you'll see here, one, two, three and four. So I'll go over those really quickly with you. Um, so criteria one, sustainability and capital investment, this category prioritized tangible capital improvement projects. Um, from businesses and organizations. One that we saw a lot of was outdoor dining areas as a way to, you know, still serve the community, have a business, but also reduce the risk of transmission from COVID. Uh, criteria two, brick and mortar slash Snoqualmie address, this criteria prioritized. Brick and mortar businesses with this Snoqualmie address as opposed to a home business or an online business or one that did not reside in Snoqualmie. And. Excuse me, criteria three, demonstrated loss of revenue, this prioritized, um, those who could prove that they had a loss of revenue due to the pandemic. Or an increase in expenses due to the pandemic. Criteria four was community based industry, so this really just prioritized. Um, organizations, businesses that were doing things that we thought were important in our community or that, that needed. That had a need such as childcare and family programming. And so you can see with each criteria. Um, there is a ranking scale of a five, three, one or a zero for each one. So an applicant would get a score of a five, three, one or zero in each criteria. That criteria is then weighted, the criteria one is more, uh, important than criteria two and so on. And between the two scores, the ranking score, the blue and the green, the weighted score, they got a total score. And, um, so that brings me back to the resolution, which also established that small businesses would get. Awards of no more than twenty five thousand dollars. Um. And so since the resolution passed, the ARPA committee has been meeting every week. Um, to discuss these criteria score applications. Um, the committee was comprised of Mayor Ross, uh, council members Holloway, Christiansen and Walton. Um, our city administrator, Mike Sauerwine, our community liaison, Nicole Weeby. Our senior financial analyst, Drew Bootay, and then myself. And so we scored all the applications based on this criteria. I'll bring you up here. Uh, to show the final score and then the distribution amounts that we, um, associated or assigned to each range of scores. So again, the cap is at twenty five thousand dollars for small businesses and nonprofits. We did identify anchor businesses, um, that we thought really bring a lot of economic vitality to the city and its businesses. And I'll scroll down so you can see that at the very bottom here, we call them our anchor nonprofits, they're large nonprofits that again bring a lot of economic vitality. And we capped their awards at fifty thousand dollars. Right, so I'll scroll back up here. And, um, let's see. I think, so for a total number of businesses that applied, this first chunk here. There were forty businesses that applied and we are recommending that thirty eight of them receive funding. There were sixteen nonprofits that applied and we are recommending that thirteen of them receive funding. Scroll down so you can see that. And then that brings us to our final total allocation recommendation, which is, uh, seven hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars. So we're recommending that that amount be appropriated for the ARPA Small Business and Community Organization Fund. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Holloway. Your realist chair, the, apart from council.
I totally spoke over the brand committee, um, I did want to further, uh, further explanation of. Uh, each of the applicants were asked what the impact or what could they use as investment for to mitigate the impact of pandemic, so each of them put for kind of a dollar figure. We proportionally scaled those dollar figures based on the ranking. So if we do, your need was high and you asked for X amount of dollars, you got very close to X amount of dollars given limitations of the fund and some of the caps we had in place. Uh, other than that, there were some considerations where we saw. Pretty strictly competing businesses where we thought it was appropriate to. pretty strictly competing businesses where we thought it was appropriate to match allocations across the business so as to not show favoritism to one or the other. Uh, based on that process and there's did a great job. There's some equations behind this in the spreadsheet that drives that. It's not opinion or anything else. There are equations from there that drive those allocations out. So all businesses are treated equally, uh, in the spreadsheet. Therefore, and as a result, these are the allocations we, the committee are recommending that we go ahead and authorize the mayor to execute on. Uh, we did have discussions that as we get into this, that some of these we do validate that they're Snoqualmie dollars being spent in Snoqualmie. That the administration will go ahead and work with that with the businesses before. So missed.
No, I think you covered it well. Let's hear it again. Councilor Watten.
Also like to add that the city didn't receive the final US Treasury, um, guidelines or, or, um, um, report till January. So there's been a bit of delay in getting these funds out, and I believe it was final approved in April. So, um, we've worked through a lot of things. This is primarily targeting businesses that were harmed from tourism, childcare, um, other things that were part of the consideration is direct social, um, service benefits to the community, uh, through a number of nonprofits. And then as, uh, Sam pointed out, that we felt that there were a couple that were anchor nonprofits that we need to make sure, um, that we support them as well so that it would have the greatest good on the community. Uh, you know, the, the ongoing needs are still going to be there. Um, we're going to have to, you know, use the same approach on the second tranche when we get it and, and figure out where it seems to be most appropriate. Um, but the small businesses have been hard hit, and we're doing our best to try to help soften the blow and give them the support they need. Families equally have been, um, uh, hit hard because of the pandemic, and this will help soften some of the costs and the expenses they have in a very fair way. In the end of the day, we're going to help as many people as we possibly can. Um, we did it in a way that I think was fair and equitable, and I commend, uh, all the, um, members of the ARPA committee and not to overlook the fact that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem make you at hand in this as well. Um, but it has been a very diligent effort and something that I think that we can walk away and say, oh, we did the best job we could. So thank you much.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we did approve, um, funding the two thousand dollars for residents at our last council meeting. And so those applications will be run through helping hands. We're also helping any residents as possible as well.
Is this document shared?
Can we? Councilor Day.
Yeah, that, that was the, the concern I had coming into that was that, um, you're asking the council to approve something that we've not seen. So there hasn't been an opportunity. I mean, I, 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 don't get me wrong. I was on, I was on the Cares Act Committee, and it was very difficult. Um. But it felt a little bit like, um, we've been asked to, to appropriate a certain amount of funds, but don't know what to. Um, it'd be, I, the analogy I used, uh, earlier today was, um, if Parks and Public Works asks us to appropriate funds for a new vehicle, they're not telling us what, what vehicles they're purchasing. Um, I'd like to have an opportunity to review this and take a look at it. Not that I'm going to change anything. I don't want to do that. I, I just feel uncomfortable with my only opportunity to see the funds scrolling up and down the screen to a point where I can't even read any of the names. Um, I don't know where it is. I don't have a chance to see the scores. Um, I have some, I, I'd like to ask some questions that are educational-based, uh, on, on looking at it just to understand. Um, uh, some of the, some of the, where the, the dollars are allocated. I, I, I know that, that may be unpopular, um, and I'll, I'll give everyone an opportunity. So I would like to move to postpone the vote on the agenda bill twenty-two zero eight-five to the next city council.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Day and second by Councilor Johnson.
Okay.
To move this to the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Is there any public comment regarding this motion?
But if, uh, to turn credit on, dispostone to time certain of next council.
Yeah.
That was the intent. In the Roberts rule of West Virginia.
Yes.
You know, one.
Yeah.
Is there him? Councilor Hallway.
A little bit, I mean, that's been part of your concern, why this is here and why we're having this conversation tonight. Um, that again, um, didn't want to expose full all business matters. Uh, some of this is confidential to the businesses, but that the process, uh, for you to understand, the process we did go through was based on the impact they stated and the criteria as listed. We scored their need and then scaled back what they requested according to need and according to funds available of the seven hundred and fifty. Right? Um. We could, I caution you, we could get into infinite loops of, are the criteria, what, is this rating really what this rating ought to be? Um, at a certain stage, it is what it is. We need to move forward upon that because, uh, uh, they are what they are. Okay, it becomes the opinion of the committee and of the staff that this, this is the appropriate rating. But you, uh, this is, that's the term. So I, I, let's keep in mind, we started this in October of last year. We're now into June. So I've been really pushing, let's get this settled and out. Because we have missed eight months of benefit we could have given to a community that was impacted.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, I. They are what they are because a committee of the council decided that that was what they were going to be. They aren't, are what they are because that's the natural order of things. A committee went through a process, and that's a process that the entire council needs to vote on. So I don't, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to, to give this a good look, and it's not, I. We all want the funds to get out, but we want to get out in a way that's, that's appropriate and that we've been able to review properly.
I would say that it does, of actually, the resolution that you did approve with the criteria specified in there, you did, you, the council, you created a council committee to review it and to bring forward the, the final wording. Um. Subsequent agenda bill for appropriation authorization. That's, that's what you asked for. And it is based on the criteria that was listed in, in Gary, already proved that. And so you've tasked your councilors to come up with the list, and they have done that. Councilor Day.
Yeah, I don't think, um, my motion is not questioning that process there as well. Um, again, um, I think the, the committee here, it was clearly done, um, their due diligence and, and the effort, uh, to come over that. It's just, I feel it is, um, my responsibility as a council member, um, empowered by the community to review the information provided to me, to have a chance to look at it before I vote on it. Doesn't mean I'm going to propose any changes. It doesn't mean I'm going to propose any, any revisions. It may, may answer one or two questions, but, but it's really about that judicial responsibility of seeing information before I affirm or, or deny a vote.
Councilor Watten.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally understand where you're coming from on the concerns. My concern is getting this done as quickly as possible, that we've waited through a lot of process to get to this point. Um, my suggestion would be, oh, and, and please, uh, Mr. Stirbank, help us out with this. If, if the motion to table until a certain time is withdrawn and we go into executive session to discuss the things that we've been hoping that are confidential, if we could view them.
Um, I will not withdraw the motion. I don't think these things are confidential, uh, reviewing the document. I'm not asking for personal and private information from the applicants. I'm not asking for their records or addresses or phone numbers or names. I'm just asking to look at the list to where the things were allocated. I don't even know the business names of what West and Al.
And the portion I, the mayor attorney, I talked, uh, this is not looking at the scoping material appropriate for the session, the executive session. First thing, if those legal, if I miss the legal term, I ought to be using.
Man, if, if I can add, I mean, we've all sworn a vote to serve as council members to the best of our ability and to maintain confidentiality. If that's the case of when it's distributed, that that has to be, hey, I have no problem with that. I'm not, that's not something that I, I, I feel very confident that if the city attorney feels that in sharing this information, he needs to designate this confidential and proprietary, it will remain that way.
And.
Councilor Hallway.
And that, I, your concern is why this is here tonight, okay? Uh, it wasn't intended to try to do that education with, with council, but if you guys want to take it, read it, ask questions, I, that it's more appropriate and part of your duty as a council. Can't argue.
Councilor John.
Yeah, I, I think that it, this has just been since, uh, you know, sometime last week, week, late last week. So I could, I had a chance to see it. I, I would go then perfectly fine with it, but I'm in agreement with the council. I'm able to say that I just want a chance to see it for myself, uh, without scrolling up and down on the screen and, uh, and all that. Um, yeah, that's my position. Thank you. That's, I agree.
Councilor Hallway.
For the, the committee members are available for the questions as well as the mayor and, uh, staff that are on the bill. So if you see this one, where's your, what did you mean by that? Um, you can go ahead and have.
So the motion is?
I mean, that's a little technical.
Any other comments? City clerk, start it. Would you please do back the motion?
The motion, as I understand it, is to postpone the decision to the next council meeting, which will be June twenty-seventh.
So we're reading vote. Hallway, there is the I.
I, I, I.
Opposed name?
Day.
Five approved and one opposed. Right, so it will be tabled and moved to next company. City clerk. The original, so, and you've done the original. Councilor Hall.
Would our next ARPA committee in Jackson Thursday, could we open that up as a committee in the whole and council members could, the other council members could attend, and we could have this kind of, uh, question, answer, discussion that, that be appropriate with, would you entertain this?
I guess when I do that, we need to. Five thousand.
Second.
There I think. So.
When is that meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Do you need that? Do you know the motion? I think. Motion, I think we need back to their original motion.
Maybe Thursday.
It's three minutes, I can't. The original motion.
This was, and if, I'm not sure, if that emotion, if we're agenda bills, uh, if you're agreeable to it, let's just go to it.
Right. We'll invite you. Oh, none of it. The original motion. Let's, your approval is agenda bill, so we need to.
You're a middle point, worry. The motion supersede, the motion to postpone supersedes the original motion. So it's now going to the next council.
Sorry, I didn't follow what was just said.
The motion is move, move it to the next, somehow, that's the original motion. I should, that we're not.
The agenda will get going forward until next council. You know, that's. That's what I want.
And we don't want to, we don't want to vote it down. I.
For all the person.
Then move it to the next full, careful consideration to the next council.
Right, I understand that. The main motion and the second on the original motion, I just want to know if they, that's superseded as they say, or do they need to withdraw the original motion?
The original motion being.
To.
To panel or to approve it?
To approve it. It's agenda bill.
So that changed my motion, or move, or pump it to a date certain supersede.
That's what I need.
I didn't see that.
All right. All right, you're moving on.
We'll learn all that tomorrow. It is.
Dinosaurs.
I think president was a pretty much. All right. Okay, so let's see, so mayor's update. So again, thanks to customers, residents that attended the capital improvement plan, open house last week. And, um, I think we learned, had opportunity to discuss the staff of different programs and projects. We gave you attended our roundtable this evening, talk about the capital improvement plan as well. Um, as part of the biennial budget, we mentioned earlier about the, the financial policies. And so those are in draft form, and they were provided to the FNA council committee this last, their last meeting, and they will review the mixed FNA meeting. But also, um, based on our budget calendar, council will review these later this month. So we will send these out to, um, this week to provide ample time for your review. So you will see the financial policies that we sort of talked about earlier today, this evening. Um, so coming back to mirrors and King County, Councilor Harry, we've been meeting monthly with the executive directors, executives from Metro, and we met this last Friday. And Metro mentioned that there will be changes to bus routes, including increasing frequency once light rail service becomes available on Mercer Island and Redmond. Um, we've also discussed trend availability on C-Rod eighteen and also Park and Ride. This, that portion will be ongoing discussion, so we'll keep you updated, advised when we find out when the, when our buses will increase frequency. And remember tomorrow night, we have parliamentary training, um, and we have the round trip, round table on June twenty-seventh to discuss council priority. So please be sure to provide your priority recommendations to the, to the clerk Estrada so that she can compile the documents for that meeting. And also I will be, I mentioned I am meeting with different businesses in Snoqualmie, and I'd like to invite either a council member or you be the damage building commissioner to join me. So we'll be sending out emails, um, as we start scheduling. I think there were two different emails out there, so usually it will be the first come, first served. And I think I found one to be then, uh, with Councilor Vincent, it might be the first one for Lindsay. And I appreciate now Councilor Watten on joining me in two, or two different company discussions. So now I will turn it over to the city minister, Sarah Wine. We will update you on the record report.
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. As we discussed last month, we have added monthly reports from each of our departments. And what I wanted to do this evening is just kind of go through and highlight a couple of items out of each of the reports, encourage you to read them for yourselves, and also, as I did in the past, I really encourage you to reach out to department directors. We have questions between council meetings or any questions about, um, you know, what's going on in their individual departments. But just to give you some quick highlights, um, in the administration department, our communications division has really significantly increased our visibility on social media. They've made a real effort to clean up, uh, and update our website. And something that's near and dear to my heart is they've started a new quarterly employee newsletter. This is really an attempt to, uh, increase the communication between departments and let everybody know what's going on in other parts of the city. Our community liaison division, uh, has set up a number of events for the summer. Couple coming up is our, is the, uh, finally Friday art and wine walks, uh, the shock on the block. Uh, finally Friday art and wine walks, uh, the shock on the block and also upcoming big truck ditch. Our human resources division has been working to fill a number of vacancies in departments. Uh, one that they're working on closely right now is our behavioral health specialist position. You might recall that this position was funded by the state for one year and we're working with our partners in North Bend uh to have funding long term for this position. Our community development department has been struggling with adding additional staff. And Jase will be very happy to know that we have hired a new senior planner who will be starting later this month. And our finance department, they have just completed a major milestone, the two thousand twenty-one financial and accountability audit. Which is a report they turned to the state auditor's office. This may sound like just a routine financial report. It's not. A huge accomplishment to complete this every year and I think if you brought them by their office about two weeks ago, you would have seen them all doing their happy dance uh as they completed this project. Our fire department has provided you with a number of interesting statistical uh information. Uh, suggest you read through it and if you have any questions, uh, talk with the fire chief directly. And in addition, uh, they've really started reaching out to the public in what I'll call the sort of uh post-COVID era. We started doing CPR classes, uh, both for the public and also for our public works department. Our information IT department has been very busy. They're working on cybersecurity, which we bring to you with a future council meeting. And they're also working on upgrading our security in our building, so both with cameras and the increased badges uh that you'll see us all wearing around our necks. Our public works department's giving you some great pictures to look through in the in their report. And they're starting it on their sidewalk repair project. I've heard from a couple of different citizens uh how much they appreciate the fact that sidewalks being repaired in their neighborhood. And they've also completed a lot of the downtown improvements that you can see out the back window. And finally, um, our police department has really made some huge efforts uh in filling some of their vacancies. We have three new entry level officers uh that are off to the academy, a lateral officer. Uh, we have four remaining openings for officers and uh the chief has interviews lined up and the opportunities uh for those folks in the future uh to bring in new officers. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, or if you'd like to direct them to an apartment directors, um, they'll be a bit happy to answer as well.
Councilor Fishon, I don't have any questions left hand, but I really appreciate all the information that was given and the lack of the additions for you. It's really helpful to hear about what's going on.
Councilor Stay.
Good question on the training tomorrow. Is that going to be here or virtual or hybrid? Or is it hybrid? So available in terms of council chambers or you can do it virtually?
Other word, a trainer, trainers, he's going to be.
That's a yes on hybrid, yeah. I think like a tentative yes on hybrid. Am I imagining the tenderness?
No, it's going to be hybrid. I I think it's more, I it's one of those trainings that's probably more productive in person if you're all here at the dais. I I didn't remind children's dinosaurs. Okay, is there any capacity to um do customer liaison report? So maybe you're liaison to commissions or committees and any updates last each meeting? So do you have any updates this evening? If you don't, we can compare for next.
I I it would be the issues committee meeting um this past week. And we talked about um, no, you are coming up as well as appointments to regional transit committee. Um, the uh, the mayor is up for that. Uh, the meeting is held shortly. It has not been already, but we're in your head. They've already asked me to attend the meeting, so like a three hour meeting on Wednesday for that, but you can go through to the A or.
Planning commission has finally, uh, through several years of work on this, put together a package of recommendations for updates to the historic downtown district. Um, that are currently working their way through the community development committee. Uh, but it was a huge lift that uh they went through. Um, and I just really appreciate all the work on that.
Right. Okay, so city compost first will take a five minute recess and reconvene at approximately eight o'clock. In the executive session, the potential litigation pursuant to RTW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one. I double I and or triple I. Any additional?
Correct, thank you, Mayor. And in addition, I have time permits. Um, I would also discuss with council and actual litigation to the specific cities of party uh pursuant to forty-two thirty. Dot one one zero, or in one, or in I, uh, for ends smaller than the number one, or one smaller. Pursued to one, two, and three, for the smaller people.
And ready to rerun that litigation or do you want questions, poke action or current practice? Or did you just cover? All that, okay. And then we will invite um city administrator Starwine. She will attend the executive session. Any additional? Anyone else to attend that? And how long do you think it'll be?
Forty-five minutes. Better have more, better have more time than less. We don't, let's get, but but the other way around.
We'll start with thirty minutes, the new extended, so you have a five minutes, right, and then we'll leave back at eight thirty.